Call the order, the March 18th, 2021 meeting of Palatine County Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting. Mr. Deniak, you do fledge of leisuries and Mr. Kennedy, you do prayer.
Fledge of leisuries to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you so much for being here with us today, Lord. I just pray that your peace is here. Also pray and ask that your peace is on the school board meeting tonight, Father. And I just glorify you, Father, and thank you for this time together, Jesus.
Amen. In request of postponed agenda items, additions, leisuries, or changes in order presentation. I'm here and I'm taking a motion to approve the agenda. All favor. Can I administer updates?
No updates, definitely.
Brings us to our presentation then. We have a DAB report company here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I allow us, DAB board, celebration. Got a presentation will be up on the screen. It's the exact same thing you have in front of you, so for you in public. What you have as a board is the same thing, you've got the book in front of you. With me is Austin Sachs, one of our other associates. Works with me and a number of our team members in terms of with the county. So we appreciate your time today. And we walk through everything. On page number one, flip my little clipper here. So just a little bit of introduction, so we've got a number of new members in the board. So welcome, we appreciate being here and being part of you. So what we do, DAB board, public finance group, have for about 20 years, a long time, with the county, lots of members. Is as an outside sort of independent voice. Help you as a county think through budgets, CIPs, capital programs, financial policies. When the need arises to borrow dollars for capital projects, how do you do that? How do you think about that? So that's really our, out of banks, we're not here to lend any money, we're not here to sell anything, investments or any of that variety. We're here very much on advisor capacity, sitting on the same side of the table. It's a horseshoe right now, but sitting on the same side of the table. So just to kind of give you that. You know, from enrichment, we've been around since, since 1863. We work with probably 7% of the counties in the state and we work with it nationally too. So this is a little bit of introduction there, we've got a lot of history with your county, so we appreciate that. So in the middle of, of page one, just kind of give you some of that overview. I think what Brett and Charlotte really asked us to do today, knowing that it's budget season. And you're going to go dig into the details of the CIP, the capital improvements plan. Is to give a little bit of an overview in terms of where you stand as a county. We're doing it a couple of different ways. So we don't need any specific action from you there, we give you a little bit of insights, big picture, use answering questions you have. And then with some of your insights going through Brett and Charlotte, we'll maybe back, give you some more specific recommendations. So just to kind of give you that, that sense of things. And as you have questions, we'll work through about these and that. So we go through that on page three. So in terms of what we have laid out in our book. First thing, like to present a little bit of a overview of credit ratings, rating agency framework, setting a decent rating agency topic. So you as a county, a very high, very strong credit rating. We'll talk about that. They're provided by outside independent agencies, not us. They're rated from Moody's and Standard and Poor's. They've been in place for a long time. That gives us a framework for how to think about, not just the debt side of things, but also the financial management side of things. So give you a little bit of that. In terms of what they say and how they think about that. Number two, we'll do a little bit of history in terms of the general fund. How you've been trending, general fund, obviously being your primary operating fund within the county. Give you some of those trends. We'll do some peer comparative analysis, something we like to do. Rating agencies do is to compare you relative to similarly sized and situated local governments. So we'll give you a little flavor of that. The last thing we'll talk about in terms of number four. Your current debt profile. Your status related to your existing financial policies, which I'll just tell you, your compliance, your shape relative to those. We'll talk about what that is. We also have hopefully some good news in that some of that debt is for safety purposes. To talk about these details. Okay, so on page four. Mentioned earlier, these are our credit ratings as a county. So we have two credit ratings. First you see there's Moody's, second is Standard and Poor's, which is shorting out to S&amp;P, you probably agree about a lot. Both outside independent entities that happen to be located in the work and provide credit ratings for local governments all across the country. So they're really doing an apples to apples, insofar as that's possible, comparison of your relative credit standing to local governments all across the country. So you can see highlighted in green, our Moody's credit rating right now is a double A2. That is in a very strong tier of credit ratings. That's their terminology, not ours. And so with Moody's, very good shape, double A2. You can see that when we started as a county, credit ratings, which is about the late 90s when high schools first started getting up. Our initial credit rating, roughly 30 years ago, was an A1. So over that last 30 years, whereabouts, your credit ratings have increased. And they're in very good shape right now. Quite a possibility, we can see this go higher in the future. Part of why we're thinking about how we maintain and how we make this better. For the moment, we're in very good shape. Take your on the right hand side, S&amp;P, you actually notch above that, double A plus. With S&amp;P, you're actually one, we call that notch, one notch below triple A. So the highest possible credit rating you can have, anybody can have is triple A. You as a county right now are just one notch ahead of that with standard. So you're in very good shape. Page, so on page five. What this is doing on page five is kind of breaking down how it is Moody's and Standard and Poor's gets to those credit ratings. So they've got us at a double A2, that's very strong. What are they using to come up with that double A2 credit rating? What matters to them? And so as you look at that. What this is showing, we call their scorecard, published by them. This is the relative weights, relative level importance, they give to different categories within their rating process. So first thing I'll point out, top of the page, is that your economy. Counts, so to speak, for about 30% of that credit rating. So oftentimes, we'll think about these are debt profile only, some of those types of things. The local economy. Counts for about a third, 30% of the underlying credit. Those are the things that obviously they're in direct day-to-day control. The board, which is very important, because it plays into your collective ability. To repay debt service and maintain good financial stability. That's first option. The second one, take your eye down page a little bit there. Financial performance. Also counts for about 30% of that credit. So what you see underneath that financial performance, have a box there. Two concepts, they say available fund balance and liquidity ratio. It's both technical terms, what they're really getting at is your reserves as a county. Fund balance, cash in the bank, matters a lot to a rating agency. Matters a lot for a whole bunch of different reasons. You can sort of summarize it as flexibility. So your ability to demonstrate flexibility to an outside rating agency, no different than if you've gone and got a mortgage. Har loan, et cetera, the bank probably wants to see, okay, what dollars do you have in the bank? Flexibility do you have? There's an issue with your payment, same concept here. And so as we talk about credit ratings, as we talk about capital planning. We always kind of come back to making sure you've got a really strong fund balance, because it matters a lot to a rating agency. After that, you have the page leverage, which basically like the relative level of debt outstanding. That's also about 30% of the credit. So it's important. But it carries equal weight to our economy and to your overall fund balance in the finances. The last little 10% there is institutional framework, that's what the rating agencies look at in terms of how much flexibility you have. Controlling your destiny, depending where you have to go. Page six, just a little bit of commentary, rating agencies publish these reports publicly, we just want to give you a couple snippets. Both directly, with ties. From their reports, sort of what they say, using their words. As strengths, things that would need to upgrade in their credit rating, things that would be down. So you look at strengths, they say strong financial operations regarding policies and planning, that's their observation of Palatine County. They say the county benefits in proximity to a diverse region of local economies, the fact that we're pretty close to Richmond. Is a positive to them, you know, obviously seeing a lot of that in the tax base and job, et cetera. And they also say there, one of our strengths is conservative budget management guided by comprehensive policies. So what they're really saying is, we as a county have policies, we follow those policies. As budgets are set, we make sure we're compliant with those, as I say, we, meaning broadly as the county. Factors that can lead to an upgrade or downgrade, we're obviously thinking more about upgrade than downgrade, you have to be aware of both sides of the equation. Factors that can lead to an upgrade, significant increases in fund balance. That's very important, rating agencies as reserves, reduction in the debt burden. A note there, we talked about debt burden side of things. So a couple of different levers that can move that. The amount of debt, but the way they look at that is relative to the size of our budget, relative to the size of our tax base. So as our tax base grows, that relative outstanding debt can actually decline. Even if we haven't necessarily paid down some debt, so we'll talk about that. The last thing on this page, things that can lead to a downgrade. Weakened income levels, you don't have any control over that, but certainly you're aware of it on a direct basis. Last two, trend of operating deficits nearing reserve levels. Those are the kind of things we watch very closely during budget season, such as case of that person. So to page seven, I won't go line by line through this. But this is the Standard and Poor's, or S&amp;P, or other credit rating agency. This is their rating scorecard, what we see here is a very similar thing. Economy matters a lot to them. Our finances in terms of fund balance and infrastructure balance, budgets matters a lot to them. The debt profile, in this case, only counts as about 10% of the ultimate credit. So what this is really saying, because there's a whole bunch of different levers, a whole bunch of slices of the pie. That matter in terms of credit rating, credit ratings are the parameter determinant of when we do go borrowing as a county. How to get the lowest possible interest rate. Just kind of do that. In our next section, we'll do a little bit of a treat in terms of financials. You can probably be aware of a lot of this. But we start on page nine. Just a very simple, county's been well-run from a financial perspective. Doesn't mean there's not challenges, doesn't mean there's new things to take on, different ways to think about things. But as a starting point, the county has been well-run financially, it has been for a long time. Second bullet point, revenues have been growing at about 5.5% on average. Your expenditures have been growing at a lower percentage than that, about 4.5%. By the way, you want things to go, your revenues be growing. At least equal to, if not a little faster than expenditures, that's a good situation. The big picture is you think about this budget cycle relative to recent history. This is going to be the first budget cycle for local governments, even peers, in a number of years. Where there's no special stimulus funds, the ARPA funds, the CARES money, all that stuff that created a lot of noise. All of the last couple of years is largely gone. We also clearly had a very strong economy the last couple of years. So as we think about the budget this fiscal year relative to prior fiscal years. It's a good time to kind of be resetting, really making sure that our recurring revenues are covering our recurring expenditures. Absent some of these unique one-time events that have happened, largely as a result of pandemic and big economic expansion. We've had since that time. Third bullet point here, your unassigned fund balance. You as a county have a policy that unassigned fund balance should be no less than 50% basically of the budget. You're a little bit above that, which is good. Fund balance, if there is one, our financial measurement metric. That you have to argue is the most important to a rating agency outside of, the first thing they're going to look at. So what is that fund balance? What is the trend of that fund balance? How does that fund balance compare relative to the size of the budget? So we'll spend a couple more pages and we're talking about that. Okay, on page 10. Mentioned this at the outset. Put in a peer comparative, just to kind of give you a sense of what this is kind of year. Not just what you look like as a county, but how you stack up relative to some of your similarly sized and related peers. So you see where you are in green there, 3.8 plus, very strong credit ratings. You can see the Gucelands, triple A, there's some different sort of nuances from Guceland. We can line up next to Prince George, Dinnah, Orange County Pope, African George. All those kind of folks are within a range of, call it, good peer comparisons. Just to kind of give a sense of where the local government's stack up. There's always specifics, maybe local government, you have to run it in such a way that makes a little sense. But just give you that. Okay, so then on page 11. Talked about what's a fund balance. This is your little history of your unassigned fund balance. So. Fund balance, very, very important, the most important part of that fund balance is your unassigned fund balance. But first thing, great to be interesting, look at, you're going to say, okay, how is a county like Palatine County trending? Any issue? What you see in that, a couple of interesting observations. Last five years, graph on the top left. Your amount of fund balance, those reserves have been growing each and every year. That's a very good trend. Certainly it goes to the fact you've had good management, as well as a good economy sort of driving this. If you take your eye to the right-hand graph. This is your specific policy that's been in place for a long time period. Around how much fund balance should we as a county have at the end of each fiscal year, especially in the drawing. County policies that have no less than 15% of the budget in its fund balance, that's what that red line is there. The green bars. I'll look at that here. Green bars here is where we've been relative to the policies, we've been right on top of your fund balance policy each and every year. Compliance with it, very much on purpose, it's a good thing, you're in good shape there. The observation I'll also make here is the size of your budget grows, which it inevitably does. As the economy grows, inflation's done its thing, last couple of years, it's made. Costs of your business become more expensive. The amount of dollars needed to be in that fund balance relative to a 15% policy ends up going up each and every year. And so we keep an eye on that, just kind of the nature of things over time period. It basically protects against that. Fund balance getting out of whack relative to the size of the budget. So it's a direct comparison here between the amount of fund balance and the size of the budget as it grows, those two things come together. Page 12 then. We talked about the prior page, the unassigned fund balance, talking about the most important part. Page 12, some of the dollars that you as a county have been able to, in essence. Save or put away towards capital investments. So Palatine did a very good job last couple of years of being able to save away purposely some dollars from a variety of different sources. So as you think about capital investments, think about needing to make improvements in the future. We're not just relying on having to borrow for those, had some dollars in the bank to help offset the need to be borrowing from the county. And so that's the trend you need to see there. Page 12, those dollars eventually do need to be expended. But you've been able to, as a county, kind of balance the need to make investments in the capital infrastructure, while at the same time not relying solely on borrowing. Page 13. This again is the unassigned fund balance. But comparing this to the peers we talked about in pages 17. So we right now as a county are about 16% unassigned fund balance relative to the budget. What you see is that you are basically in line with a number of your peers. With Buckland, James, Amelias, et cetera, they're in around 17%. So plus or minus within the 16% range. There are a number of these local governments. Look at that, Dinnah, Gulf, Repubeslan, Orange, Prince George, Indian King George. Have substantially higher amounts of fund balance relative to the size of the budget. So 50% is a solid level, served you well as a county for a number of years. But it's not out of line on the high side. Some of the counties as a county are holding back a bunch of dollars that other peers aren't. You can compare that really in the lower side in terms of the amount of unassigned fund balance dollars relative to your neighbors. If you flip the page, page 14. Similar graph, this is just taking like a little bit broader picture of the fund balance. Not just the unsigned, taking into account some of those other portions of reserves that you have. That takes your percentage up to about 26% of your balance. So you're closer to the median, which is in that blue line right there. But still not the high side, very much in responsibility level. So as we flip the page, again on page 15, your assessed value trend. This is something that a number of your neighbors and peers have seen over the last 35 years. Seen this probably in housing value, in your tax base, et cetera. And so your total assessed value over the last 10 years. Look at that, 14, 15, coming out of the last financial crisis, very flat. Starts to pick up there in 17, 18, but still kind of modest, 2, 3% relative to the year. And then you get to 21, 22, 23. You really see some of those very substantial increases in size of your tax base. You know that if you're going to see it, it's multi-development and increases in existing fund values. So our message for the moment, for you and for others, is that we don't see that same level. For economists, especially prognosticating where that's going to go. But it's very hard to envision a scenario where you have that sustained level of year-over-year, 15, 20% growth. So we just kind of like to keep that, keep that back of our mind, especially if you're in budget planning, multi-year planning. We expect to probably still continue to grow, do construction, et cetera, but not at the pace we have been. That then plays into the real estate tax rate, the primary revenue source. You can see where that has been very steady, in around 90 cents, like pennies. Started to fall as the size of that tax base grew. And with the last big sort of pop in our values, you're now down to 69 cents. So very, very competitive region in terms of the tax rates. We'll show you the peer comparison. The flip side to that is that is your primary revenue stream. And what we're seeing with counties all across the state is that that impact of inflation. Where we had a couple of years where the tax base was growing faster than inflation, probably not that scenario. Inflationary pressures are what they are, you can't necessarily control that, so bigger forces. And so we'd be very prudent and cautious about planning around this year's budget, future year's budgets. To make sure that your recurring revenues are truly covering. The recurring expenditures, which are kept running. So just to put that all out, we start. Page 17 just gives you that, in this case, we just have a regional, so you see a little bit different set of peers here, region. Outside of Guceland and New Kent, New Kent's 67, Guceland 53, the league. Guceland, if you fit in, Bellohino or in right, the Chesapeake, certainly the city of Richmond. In terms of relative competitiveness with that real estate tax rate. Look at page, I can, I'll pause there, if there's any question, thoughts, comments, anything for the moment here.
The movement from double A to triple A, what's the, what's the rough difference in percentage?
Hard to say exactly. Probably, like from double A plus to triple A, day-to-day, it's probably about five basis points, thereabouts. So what that tells you is right now, if you're going to be borrowing sometime in the near future. You wouldn't quite be at triple A at this rates. But five basis points plus or minus in that range is a very, very tight window. Virginia by and large tends to be viewed very favorably in the marketplace. You as a big government city, states triple A, your Chesapeake, Georgia, et cetera, triple A. So somewhere in that range, plus or minus.
I'll be getting to this later, so if so, just hold on. On page six, you, the things that could cause downgrade is a substantial increase in debt. One may have substantial, another may have not. What, what's, what is our current position, what's our threshold before we face such a problem?
Cover that, it's a perfect segment, so if I cover that, we'll start on page 19, and we'll definitely say.
Okay, Mr. Chair? We have one question on the tax rate, so currently we're at 0.69. Inflation's running roughly 4 or 5%. So if that inflation rate continues, 0.69 tax rate. In order for us to keep up with the current expenditures, it's probably not sustainable, would that be a correct statement?
Could be, so what? The important variable there is what happens with the line of tax base. So to the extent that the tax base is growing at a pace that is commensurate with inflation. That's 69 pennies or 69 cents could be sustained. But if we're in a situation whereby the tax base itself, which is where our revenue is coming from. Isn't growing at a pace that's commensurate with the expenditures, then that could indeed be right. So I think the way I would, we would typically think. be right. So I think the way I would, we would typically think about making sure it's balanced is watching the dollars in expenditures and certain things that those counties kind of have to do. And making sure that those are balanced with the dollars and revenues on the equation. And the tax rate ends up being a byproduct of making sure those two things are balanced.
But if the county didn't grow at the rate, because thinking one year, the size growth rates kind of slowed down, the county. So if that trend will continue or level off, point six nine would not be a sustainable tax rate for the county to be able to keep up with expenditures. Okay, thank you. The flip side of that is the revenue is still there. But we have the other side of the equation. We can, we can control our expenses. We can spend this and balance that. Sixty-nine cents may well be adequate.
Could be. The, the one, one caveat I would say there is there, just by virtue of being a county, there's a lot of things that end up being right along handed to you. So your ability to control a lot of these mandates that the state puts on you, and obviously the deep pocket behind schools and things of that variety. Those, there's certainly leverage in both allowances aboard control of what is put into the budget, what is spent. But in this environment, it's, it's, it's hard to imagine that you end up spending less than you are. It's entirely up to you as a board. Right? So I'll make that general observation.
Page twelve, the fund balance at twenty-three is twenty-six million. What is that, what's the current, current amount? You've got twenty-three, I'm just wondering.
Charlotte would probably have to adjust. So that's going to be your last audit to come as of June thirteen. I would think as capital projects are ongoing.
Correct. It kind of ebbs and flows with the expenditures. So I mean, I can get that to you. I couldn't get it to you right now. I need to do a little math.
Appreciate it more or less.
Probably be more at this point, but once Station One and Turner starts amping up and we start paying out those, it'll go down.
So these are important, I promise you.
Most of it really is spoken for. There is some that, as they start to finish, I will go in and clean up and send we'll send it back to the general fund, which means that our, we're able to get procurements down lower than what we, what we anticipated. But the way we manage our capital projects typically is, once you figure out your projects and what we can cash fund, we transfer that money over there. And then as they work the project, which could take a year or two, depending on what it is, it will sit in fund balance. But it is spoken for majority of that. The only part that's not is that capital maintenance reserve piece of six point two million. That is sitting, that's part of our assigned fund balance in the general fund that we are proposing to use part to fund some of the pay go in twenty-five.
Switch to. Plus or minus, pretty much.
Yes.
One last question, if I could, on page fourteen, just so I can understand where we stand. In my interpreting the bar directly, it brings us to Goochland. They have a lot, comparing to their revenue, they have a lot more in their fund balance. They're, they're accumulating this money and not using. Is that correct interpretation?
Is it, you know, point in time, that's right. So all these measurements are done point in time at the end of your audit, that's right. So the, the important nuance there is your fund balance, maybe today, Charlotte just said, it's going to ebb and flow more differently than maybe your checking account and savings account. You might, in personal finance, you might get to the end of the calendar year and say, okay, how am I doing relative to budget, savings, checking? That kind of situation. That's what these numbers represent. At the end of fiscal year, it's measured, but realistically, every day, those dollars are going to be poured out running the county, both operations.
Your period was at twenty-eight point nine, Goochland's at fifty-six point one.
Yep.
Generally, in my, in my household budget, more savings is good. The issue here is they're saving beyond what they might need to. Are they saving for something? You don't know. What's good and what's bad? What's, what's, what's the metric that you use to measure?
Yeah, so it's a couple. So it's relative to your own policies. So first and foremost, you want to make sure you're applying to your policy, which you are. Second, where we like to use some of these is to say, okay, where do we stack relative to others similar in size and level of relevance? And so probably the better direct apples out is comparisons in page thirteen. Because the unassigned tends to be truly the dollars that don't, that are spoken for in some way. Sort of timing issue around it, as Charlotte was mentioning, capital projects. It's in the bank today, it's eventually spent on projects that are already two hundred ways. But better apples out is comparisons in page thirteen. And so if we're right now at sixteen percent, that period was about twenty-three percent. So in a perfect world, it would be good to see the county be able to grow that more towards that call it, more towards the twenty percent, than the fifteen percent or lower. Because what rating agency is going to do is they're going to look at you specifically, but they're also going to be looking safe on a relative basis relative to neighbors, peers, other local governments. How do you stack that?
Don't try. How, how do we, how would you, how would we go about increasing that unassigned fund balance?
Probably takes a couple of years. It probably takes multiple years of having more revenues than expenditures. So having a structurally balanced budget whereby revenues are fully covering expenditures. And what you typically see is a budget that is set up in such a way that there's always going to be surprises during the year. But really, at the end of the year, you want to have a surplus, maybe in your personal finance, your personal life. You'd like to have more revenue or income expenditures, same type of situation.
And the amount of unassigned fund balance is what in dollars?
Sixteen point one million, as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, which is what can be measured.
With fifteen point one million in the bank, unassigned any project is in your, in your view, as a financial project, that should be higher.
In a perfect world, it could be fifteen percent being that level right now is in compliance with the policies. Whereas as you look at those peer comparisons, higher is better. The other, one of the points I'm making, and I'll say this, is in the current interest rate environment, the other reason that like having the list on fund balance has changed a lot the last couple of years is those dollars in the bank generate interest earnings. So if you look back in the early two thousands, especially twenty-ten, we were probably twenty, earnings, new savings account, fund balance was ilch out of luck. Nowadays, since the interest rates have evolved, short-term rates are really very favorable. So for instance, it's a state-run pool program, the LGIP, functions much like the money markets, you give everyone money market in their personal life. That's actually earning about five and a half percent right now. And so your point about having sixteen plus million dollars, if that's earning five and a half percent, that is revenue that helps the general fund, helps the county, takes pressure off of the budget, plus the taxpayers. And so having that strong fund balance, that's a being a money saver for the county by virtue of having such strong insurance. Just changed a lot the last couple of years. Okay, um, we'll switch gears a little bit. On page nineteen, we talk about county's debt, what's outstanding right now. And I think Mr. Powers' question, start to answer, was the right relative amount? How do we know? So page nineteen is showing you the current amount of debt outstanding right now as a county. It's about eighty-eight million dollars. We've shown that in two different ways. On the left-hand side, you can see it broken out between general government, schools, water and sewer, some smaller capitals. So these tend to be kind of the various types of projects in finance with a bar. All of this debt is fixed rate. And it looks very much like a fixed rate mortgage in your personal life. So if the county were to do nothing else going forward, these debt payments you see right here, fixed, they didn't change unless you as a county were to go do something maybe to refinance for savings purposes, a lot of that, they just didn't get that opportunity. Also importantly, very similar to residential mortgage, you maintain principal payments each and every year. So we will at times get questions surrounding the realm of governmental debt. Orararies, or sometimes maybe federal government, which is a totally different animal. You as a county, you go borrow for projects, you borrow for capital projects. So you can't go, by law, you can't go borrow for fund operation expenditures. You can't kind of do the credit card thing or buy maybe your personal, can't pay your utility bill with your credit card. It doesn't work that way. What you do is you go borrow, again, uses personal finance analogy. If you're going to buy a house, remodel the kitchen, fix the air conditioner, do those types of things. Take that back to accounting, those are the types of capital investments that are allowable when you go out and borrow for, when you do borrow money. In the way that Virginia operates, and not all states are like this, you as a county, the board supervisors have the authority to go borrow dollars for capital projects. Other entities, school board does not have the ability to go borrow. Other various entities that have underneath you don't have the same abilities and power that you do as a board supervisors to go borrow for these capital projects. So that, that power basically rests with you as a county, as a board. The most cost-effective way to go borrow is certainly to keep those credit ratings in good shape, because that is such an important determinant, no different than personal finance. Whether it be a mortgage or a car loan, or where it is, the bank is going to go and look at your credit score. The higher the credit score, the lower the interest rate, same concept here. So the higher that our credit rating is, by virtue of having good fund balances, following our policies, et cetera, the lower the interest rate. When you as a board decide, okay, it's time to make some investments that is going to be for borrowed six dollars.
So we, we have thirteen years left on whatever we're amortizing now, whatever our debt, thirteen years to get down. Still have a principal of two point six million. So what we borrow, the bonds that we have now, it'll take thirteen, it'll take thirteen years to get. Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the year, most, so most local government borrowing, if you were in either county, could do. You're typically going to be financing things that are going to be improvements to buildings, long-term capital assets. They're going to be around for a long time period. And so the other reason that you think about borrowing, so take for instance, the school projects have been done in recent history. Those are going to be around for decades and decades and decades. And so they're going to benefit taxpayers for those multiple decades. And so borrowing for that helps to spread the cost of, use the term generation equity sometimes. So that today's taxpayers are bearing the full burden. Exactly what an asset is going to be benefiting taxpayers.
What interest rate are we paying on this, on this particular bond?
It, it varies. There's a whole breakout at the back of here, and I'm happy to flip you through this. What we do is we watch where interest rates are and all the different types of loans that you have. When there's an opportunity to make those interest rates lower, refinance for savings, just like you might do with the mortgage. That's part of what we're doing is bringing that to you. So if you were to flip and go page right here, page forty-five. Page forty-five has all of the details of the current interest rate and all the outstanding debt. The years, the amounts, the interest rates, when things are paid off. Call date, call price, which is basically when loans can be paid. So all of that detail is there on page forty-five. We highlight it in green. Slipped two and a couple of pages back from the book. Three of those loans, like they can be refinanced for savings purposes based on today's earnings. Twenty eighteen and twenty fourteen. And I'll walk you through that. So last thing I'll mention on page nineteen, when we go, is there's a whole plethora of different ways that a county can go borrow for capital projects. And so there's general public obligation bonds, there's things called lease revenue bonds, there's things called capital leases, there's state programs, there's an ability to borrow in the public markets, bank lending, it's been competitive at various points. Without spending too much time getting into the weeds on that, so to speak, there's a lot of different options. You as a county have benefited from basically all those options. State programs, public markets, high loans, all those kind of things. Part of what we do with you is to sit down, it's time to go actually borrow the dollars and think through which of those makes the most sense from interest rate perspective, from time, cost, et cetera. So you've got a bunch of different options available to you. And at the time that you're ready and identify projects, you can always sort of back around for a discussion.
Size and term, what, what impact does that have on marketability and on expenditure? Size of borrow can.
Yeah, it can have an impact. So within a range something that is, is very, very small, maybe is less attractive for certain avenues if you go borrow. Something that's very, very large, relatively speaking, is something that would be probably allow a couple of different avenues for borrowing on. So the usual measuring sticks would be if we pay for whatever we're going to borrow, does it fit within our financial policies? Those are the right measurements for purposes of rating agencies. And then you can filter down from there to say what type of financing makes the most sense. Historically, if maybe it's two to five million dollars that you're borrowing, banks have been very competitive when they're competitively against each other. Doesn't say it has to be that way, but something. If you're ten, fifteen, twenty million plus in terms of financing, banks historically have not been as competitive. And so that's when you look to maybe a state program or maybe the public markets. So size and term can absolutely impact things. But if we have credit ratings, which we do, a lot of different options, we've got the ability to kind of filter something out. So it shouldn't make too big of a difference if you've got the right financing option.
The reason I ask is if we look at some of the school projects, what, what is in our CIP now, F Y twenty-five, has direct bearing on what they're going to do in F Y twenty-six, R T U's and groups. So I, if we're going to borrow, if F Y twenty-five, twenty-six, maybe the practice exists because of the project itself. I mean, we're not going to borrow from the R T U or group. I'm trying to see if I've thought of.
They all, all very good points. And I mean, something that what we'll be doing once you get through this and you work through the CIP and budget process, we'll come back to you with some of those exact ones. How do we most efficiently fund us some projects based upon your priorities, based upon what Charles say, here's what things need to get done. When, that's when we start to kind of work through the sausage making process. And how do we bundle things to make it most efficient? Exactly your point, you're not doing a bunch of individual little financings. There are a lot of ways to bundle different.
And you'll bring associated tax rates to support that.
Okay, so, so that's maybe a little bit of an overview there in terms of the existing debt. And so we, we talked about our financial policies. I think Mr. Powers, your question of what is the, the way to measure a I think Mr. Powers, your question of what is the the way to measure a responsible amount of debt? How do we know we're getting outside of the realm of that? And so we start that by looking at our financial policies. You've had two longstanding financial policies, the first of which is on page and screen here, page twenty. Debt service to expectations. So this is basically a ratio that says how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget are going to make the debt service. Our existing policy even as a county says, we don't want any more than twelve percent. Twelve pennies out of every dollar. We at times have had up to fifteen percent. We've had big projects that we have to take on, just school projects. But anything in around that twelve to fifteen percent is our last as a county.
What's out of ten percent?
It was moved up in the last school financing.
Just in Florida?
That was twenty eighteen.
It went from twelve to fifteen. We've never been at ten since I've been here, not since I've been here in ten years.
And so again, I think if you were to look around at other similar local governments, peers anywhere in that twelve to fifteen percent range is gonna be amongst of your peers. Different, but similarly sized local governments will be within that. The other thing to point out to the Mr. Parker question, rating agencies, look at that table right inside the page. This is showing you standard force perspective, what they view as being very strong, strong adequate, so forth and so on, in terms of that particular ratio. So if we're anywhere in that eight to fifteen percent range, we're viewed as being strong in that particular ratio. So it's not just one thing we're looking at, it's a variety of different things, our policies, the way we just hear about all the issue. Look at the page and see what peers are doing. Again, you've got a whole range here, orange, King George is doing, et cetera, and sixty seven percent. Amelia we work with, who's been working for a long time, they're kind of got lower range. You can see anywhere within that twenty nine, ten percent range is where those peers are.
Excuse me. So the the area between those, that's that's the range that we could borrow to. Want to find out if we're talking about millions or not?
We can, we remember today, it's it's in the tens of billions. That's part of it will come back is is called part two.
That's the next meeting. But we've got, we've got a waste, we've got, we have some moves.
That's right. And again, it's multiple, multiple ways, that's not the only measure that we're gonna use, that's one of those measures. That will come back based on your C I P.
Maybe we can get Mr. Rose's model. To start to see, as as that line starts going up and approaches that area, what it's gonna do to the taxpayer.
Sorry, yeah, there's two concepts there. What we're talking about with these ratios, we tend to refer to as debt capacity. So which capacity can we have as a county to borrow for projects and keep us in line with their policies? Such your tech capacity. The other, arguably more important of the two concepts is debt affordability. That's exactly what you're talking about, it's your dollars in terms of where do the dollars come from within the budget to make the decisions?
Which gets to the most important criteria, and that is the threshold pain that our citizens tolerate in terms of taxes. I mean, it's 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 a balance.
That's right, it is very much a balance. So we tend to use those two terms, debt capacity, proving that we're within our responsible range. Debt assessed value, our other policy, you have page twenty two, we're below one and a half percent. We've got this four percent policy, it's been in place for a long time. Look at ours and try and bring that down, just given how much your tax base has grown in the last couple of years. We could very much in line with that particular policy.
What is a general obligation credit?
So that's one of the various types of borrowings that you can do as a local. General obligation typically refers to borrowing those secured by full faith and credit. Different states, it takes different nuances to it, but it's the full faith and credit of the government versus sort of pledging for maybe just a piece. That takes us to page twenty three in terms of the comparative. You can see where you are, about one point four percent, the peer group about one point three percent. You're right in line with that relative level of outstanding debt. By the Amelia is gonna be less active. King George, King Lee, the Pudding Man, Prince George, those tend to be. Popular, any questions so far? Part, part one, if you will. All right, so next section here, we've mentioned this a couple of times. As we watch interest rates relative to where existing loans are, we've got two opportunities to refinance for savings purposes. Something to watch continually. I'll just cut right to the chase in terms of that fourth bullet point there. It's tied to two specific ones, twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen. Can we talk about refinancing for savings purposes? What we need is no different than maybe your home mortgage. We keep the same final maturity, so we're not pushing anything further out. Keep the same final maturity, you have a higher rate to a lower rate. There's a lot of nuances within how exactly that works, but the ultimate goal is if we're right now paying four plus percent, how do we, without pushing anything out, take that to something lower, maybe even three percent range? Page twenty six, just to give you a little perspective. Obviously, a lot of discussion about interest rates in the headlines, newspapers, et cetera. This is showing us on page twenty six is a, we call it twenty bond index. This is a broad index of listed bonds and tax exempt basis. We as a county go down to go borrow, we are able to borrow with tax exempt basis. And so that average, left hand side of the page here, is all the way back to nineteen eighty, last forty years. What we see is that the current interest rates are at or around sort of the same level they have been probably for about the last ten or so years. Pandemic, the associated time period, it was clearly a historical abnormality. Rates are higher than they were during that time period, on a historical basis, they're still way higher. And so we'll talk more specifically about that. The other corollary to that. So for long term borrowing rates, corollary to that, if you back this discussion about fund balance, the importance of it is if the long term borrowing rates for twenty years, we're probably plus or minus four percent right now. The short term rates for reinvesting, so having your savings in the bank is more like five plus percent. So you're actually able to borrow at a lower interest rate. With a fixed rate over a long time period, then you're able to, excuse me, the the interest rate of borrowing is less than the earnings the fund balance, again, using the state programs.
Quick question. Are we restricted by state code in terms of how much you can receive? No.
Not on your bank accounts, you are on debt borrowing. You can get into an arbitrage situation if you spend it.
So on the refinance question, of course, when you do your house, they have a loan origination fee. What kind of charges are there if we refinance?
It it depends upon how we would go out and do that. So if we flip the page to page twenty eight, so this is showing the first of the two loans that we are looking about and thinking about in terms of the ability to refinance. So maybe a couple nuances here and then. At the end of the day, any of those costs, whether it be the state program fee, whether it be rating agencies, us, lawyers, et cetera, we always build that into this. So you see the net savings relative to what that is. And so in this particular loan, twenty eighteen loan is about eight and a half million dollars outstanding right now. Since the power refunded eight, five, nine, six, roughly, they call it eight point six million. The current interest rate on that, it's like coupon rate, about three ninety one. Fixed rate, so if for some reason our move or you decide you don't wanna refinance, that doesn't change. But you're right now about three ninety one in terms of the current. We've run these numbers, which are estimates, based upon a state pool program called Virginia Resource. They go borrow on behalf of local governments, usually about three times a year, they pool them together. They do have some associated costs and fees, and so we'll get to that point, we'll kind of run that all and show it all to you. But the estimate right now, what that refinancing rate would be, is about a two ninety nine. So round it off a little bit, call it about three percent. So right now, we're about three ninety one. Based on current page, you go from three ninety one to three percent, then with extension, final maturity. Keep saying final maturity, what that does is it saves you, right inside the page, about fifty thousand dollars a year. Or five hundred thirty thousand dollars or something like that. So you're taking about ninety basis points off the interest rate. The other important, sort of the number to look at on this page, is this net P E savings concept. And this is specific to public finance, what that's really doing is measuring time value. So a dollar today is worth a dollar in ten years, and so, and so on. And equating that time, excuse me, equating the savings to that time value. And so the bogey benchmark typically looking at that present value savings is three percent. Relative to the size of the problem. So very bottom number down, right now is a four point three four. Anything above three percent is viewed as being efficient, reasonable, responsible in terms of the level of savings. Anything below that, you start to question, does that really make sense? In terms of the amount of savings you're getting relative to the size of the money.
That report makes its money. Issues of debt and on the refinance. It's one of the things we do, that's right. Those fees are, the net savings, that's incorporated, or you 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 can, you're gonna come back, that's cool, save.
That's correct. So that's all, that's all a net number. And there's other things too, there's warriors, the special bond counselor, that's to. The way the world wants to document things, always. Advice with the tax code, et cetera.
If the advice you give us, your time here, are we being billed for that?
Not in the short.
Let me reach for my wallet, you have a lot of questions you have. In that case, not behind the pass line.
He's paid about an hour. What we've assorted done is we've done all this kind of work, and when it comes time to do a financing, we usually bill at such times, there's refinancing or something.
I I'm not against you making money, that's that's what your business is doing, I just wanted to maybe understand that, you know, how you make your money where you go. On bond issues, debt issues on our part, or refinancing, that that brings, that brings money into the coffers.
That's, that's correct. And so that's the, the, the twenty eighteen. And so again, these are estimates based upon the current market. The other thing we watch, because they are estimates, the market moves on a given day, plus or minus, et cetera. Is relative to that savings threshold, we talked about, that three percent savings. How close, how much could markets move, how much could the interest rate move? Until such time as you start to pump up against that typical saving threshold. And so in this case, it ends up being about twenty basis points, so it's a little, it's, it's not a whole lot of, that's pretty close. That's why we watch things over time. Could very easily next week, could, could come or go. Over the long term, most of these things end up eventually working for savings purposes. We always like to kind of measure how I would like to use it, this will work in the environment, sensitivities. So the other loan, this is twenty fourteen loan. Via D R A, it's about four million dollars outstanding right now. The current interest rate, it's kind of a range that we see that, three point one two five, three and a five and a average on that chin to see here is about a four point three percent. So if you said, what's the interest rate on this loan right now, it's about four point three percent, plus or minus in that range. And we're similar refinancing, not extending the final maturities, guess you do about three percent. In terms of the current market for refinancing them. So a couple of different percentages, they all happen to be about three percent, but the average interest rate for refinancing that obviously is from about a four point three percent to about a three percent. Say you have about plus or minus twenty five thousand dollars a year, about three hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Which is total, all these. Uh, in terms of savings? It's about a million, uh a million dollars there, that's five thirty plus three twenty six. Still a bit less than.
So what you're watching for is if we follow your advice, taking one and a half million dollars in potential savings.
I'm sorry, what's the number? Uh, it's about nine hundred thousand dollars. That's right, and you also have an ability to do one and not the other, there's different ways, we can kind of refinance a piece of it and not the whole thing, but for the moment, watching these two loans both together as separately. Thought process is as you work your way through the budget, C I P and other projects that may be to your earlier point on binding things for efficiency standpoint. As you work your way through the budget, watch where interest rates are. Possibly combine a refinancing, if indeed there's capital projects that you can afford, we think of finance, or like schools, or general government, think about combining a number of these things together.
Our friends in the Federal, Federal Reserve, if you get lower interest rates, now would be the time.
Hard to know exactly, well, I, the, 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 the theory there would be that the market's already taken that into account.
Just one question, I assume if we paid these off early, there's no prepayment penalty?
So look at the, the call date. Thirty one, so the twenty fourteen loan is what we call callable October first of this year. And so in this particular one, yeah, as of October first, you can pay that loan off. And it depends upon each individual loan. Typically, bond issues are sold in the public markets with a, it's called a ten year no call period. So that's one that variables, since it's a bond investor, things, this is not specific to county. One of the things that this bond market typically looks for is something that's bought within the first ten years of a loan, is typically not callable, meaning you can't take it back away from the investor.
So to your point earlier, if it's got a call date in October, we could pay this off and combine with another one, correct? And refinance that?
You could, that's exactly what we're talking about. Is refinancing that, the only nuance I make there is, when we think about paying it off, we think more of truly taking cash and paying it off versus refinancing, much like maybe we do a home mortgage. Say, okay, if I'm right now paying four point three percent of my home mortgage, I'd like a new loan at a lower interest rate. That's the concept that we're thinking about.
Correct, thanks.
Sensitivity, plus or minus, how sensitive is that particularly refinancing, given the markets? They could, interest rates could be about sixty basis points, which is about one half of one percent. Still need that, that loan saving structure. So from our standpoint, we keep watching this update, Charlotte over time, as you work with your budget C I P process. It's likely here in the spring, summertime, we can buy and see these concepts. That really brings us to our next steps, and we're happy to answer the questions you have, we appreciate the time. But really, our thought would be, over the balance of March and April, take some of it done here, look who's been helping Mr. Chair, no wish. And then take some of the specifics in the C I P, who's the bottom of the front row, and get to Mr. Power exactly, the concepts you were talking about, which is the debt affordability and debt capacity. Looking at the C I P, what projects are identified, where, it's not for us to tell you in terms of what departments are, tell us, we can start to group that in some different scenarios you can look at.
How long has that been working? Do we do this without taking?
It's about, it's over twenty years, it's long enough that I don't know the exact.
Three days, three days you're, you're involved.
Correct, I've been here for twenty-one years. And I worked with, he was accounting for that. Senior colleagues, David, I think started working with the county, maybe in the late eighties, maybe in the nineties.
These that down for charge.
Uh, they are, we have a contract with, you have a contract with us? We do.
What is that contract, what's the term of that contract?
Thank you. How awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate we told the good counties, keep us straight.
Appreciate it.
Good job. Appreciate it. Brings us to our course of public comment period, three business individuals, five minutes per group. With the sound of the table, we're about to speak.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six, Phil, Chris, Paul Ten. I'll talk fast, I'm sure you all are already behind a little bit today. When I came to the March seventh meeting in this conference room, one of the things I took away, probably the biggest things is, our schools are in bad shape, the infrastructure is, and we're going to have to spend a lot of money on it, and we really don't have a lot of choice in that. When somebody tells you thirty-three percent of the water heaters don't work in the school, I just don't see how you can put your head and say, and say, we're not going to spend that money. So today, when you talk about the, the C I P, there are some things in there that are discretionary. And I would ask you to be very discretionary as you do that. The number one thing on my list that, I don't think you ought to be spending money on, is the community center. If you choose, and you're going to choose, whether we spend two and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-five on the community center, you're not just signing up for two and a half, there's another ten million behind that, you're not going to start a building and then use the other ten million. Historically, looking whenever the county budgets for a project, capital project, it's going to be higher than what we budgeted for. You can look at the last two, three, four, five that we've done this, and every time, we've gone over what was originally budgeted. So I strongly urge you to choose wisely. And I think if you really think we, that a community center is something that is needed, don't think about building. Think about what is the goal of a community center, right? What do you, what do you want to get out of bringing the community together? And is there a way to do that without building a twelve and a half million dollar one? Thank you for the consideration.
Joy Fago, twenty-seven sixty-two, Bayonne Road, I'm speaking on behalf of the library group of trustees. And I know you're going to talk a little bit about the C I P, so that's what I'm talking now. Thirteen years ago, we went out on our first outreach program, and we swept everything over the line. Since then, we've added daycares, church groups, senior groups, plus the settlement, our county school district, we do things with them. Extension offices, state park, we go to Earth Day, Christmas parade, farmer's market, and when somebody requests, we show up with all kinds of stuff. Tables, chairs, giveaways, scrapbooks, stem stuff, now we're in this down, so it's all on board. Just to give you an idea, I, Chandra, had the staff get together since in the last couple of months, three months. We clocked a hundred eighty-seven point eight miles that we went. You multiply that times four, it's seven hundred fifty-one point two. Now, ten years ago, we requested a vehicle, because you got to fit all this stuff in something, you know, and it would be handy. We also were concerned that the state guidelines say that everybody's supposed to be within fifteen minutes of a library, what kind of happened here. So they talked about the east end, far east end, even renting a storefront, maybe doing a little extension library, all those things are very expensive. Good day, talk about money. So the thought was, if we had some kind of vehicles, it could be even like a mini bookmobile kind of thing, that might work. Right now, that's sort of a perfect solution, because one thing that good day came out of it is, we now have books to go. People can peruse the, the cat park catalog, they can pick a book, staff will check out the book, put it in a bag, they can pick it up in a lobby, they can pick it in the lock boxes on the floor, which are paid for by a grant from COVID money as well. We would also like to go out and be able to set up somewhere here and there around the county to service the far east and the far west ends. Right now, even in the west end, we have, I think we have sixty-seven people that have Cumberland library carts, because it's too far for them. We have elderly people that'll drive a little bit, but they won't drag quite that far. So this would help, you know, that situation as far as that's, so how are we doing outreach now? Well, our staff all uses their own cars, and it's getting more difficult. And I'll just give you some observations, I've seen things stuffed in there, packed in there, people can't see out of their back windows, tying things on the roof of cars, and then sometimes somebody comes up and their husband needed the S U V that day, or whatever. So now we have to get a second staff member who might volunteer their car, and then we have to send two people out to do something that only one person should be doing. And then on top of that, we have to call in a cell to help fill, you know, the gap in the library. So this is a problem, I'm always thinking about liability. What happens if they get in an accident, what happens if somebody gets hurt? What happens is the county merchandise and property that we're transporting in all these people's personal cars. You know, who's going to sue who, you know, their, their company's going to want their money back. Right now, it's becoming a little tighter, because as, you know, some of the staff, their kids have gotten bigger. They're not getting S U Vs anymore, they don't need the room, they want smaller cars, and they're fishing cars, so we have fewer people that have S U Vs. Other things that had happened, which I didn't mention, is we had somebody that scratched their car, and was happy, and was able to buff it out, and they didn't want to make a big fuss. I know in my car, yes, I've transported things everywhere as well. Somebody pushed something in, cut the back seat of the driver's seat, seats were pushed down. Well, it was an older car, we're going to be trading it soon. I never lied to my husband, but I maybe neglected to mention it, and he never sits in the back seat, so, you know, some things are left unsaid, and it's better that way. Keep in mind, we're not asking for one vehicle for one person's life, these are nine people, five full-time and four part-timers, who would be sharing this vehicle. Now, over fifty percent of the people in this county have a library card. It's approximately thirty thousand people, so we are servicing over fifteen thousand people in this county every year, twelve ones out of the year. Over the past two years, we have been issuing approximately fifteen to a hundred new library carts every month. Are books to go. People are interested in this, they want to be able, I think they love if they could just go to a spot, whether it be, maybe Huguenot Firehouse, and set up one so we be able to pick up books there, because we have, in any month, I checked back to July, between six hundred and fifty to eight hundred books to go on our books to go. Seven hundreds about average. In February alone, we had twelve thousand two hundred and twelve items checked out to our library, some are in actuality, some are digitally. Okay, we're not looking for anything fancy, I don't even care if it's a used vehicle, we just need something that's functional. Now, of course, you know, you buy something, just like the sheriff said, then you have to trick it out, and plus, that's why his place cost sixty thousand dollars, you talked about the other day. Well, yes, we need things in it, but that's something we can take care of. We have state aid, there are grants, grants will let you buy the vehicle, grants will let you trick it out. State aid has gone up, and we're not funded, state aid is still not fully funded according to state code. We're at, we went from seventy-five percent for libraries, we're up to eighty-five percent, hopefully get to a hundred percent. This is for the whole state, the state code, why don't we do it? So yes, we can use other funding, and we also have our friends in the library group that pays for all the materials and stuff as far as if we need anything, you know, for, for color programming, maybe color programming. They come up with between seven and ten thousand dollars a year that taxpayers don't have to pay. So this year, we thought after ten years, that's how long ago we asked for this vehicle, seemed to be our year. So that's why I didn't speak any other time, because it just seemed like this was on the C I P, and that's what's going to happen, and then suddenly, well, the C I P, and what happened every two years, it gets knocked down another two years. So at some point, you know, I don't know how much longer we can keep using, you know, the employees' cars. And they shouldn't be using their car, they schlep stuff all over the place, not, not to that degree, not the eight hundred miles a year. So I really hope that maybe some, we can do anything this year, I know you're being pulled in every which way and direction, I understand that. But at least don't kick it off two years, maybe, maybe till next year, you know, maybe you can do something, I don't know. As you, every time I speak to any of you folks, I always thank you for your time and attention, and I always say, I appreciate all your hard work, I don't think people realize how much goes into what you do, and I always have to believe in my heart that every one of you always has the best interest of the county, but I believe that, I have to believe that, I do believe that. So thank you very much, no matter what you decide.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, some close course of public comment period, that'll bring us to the whole business.
So continuing our F Y twenty-five budget workshop discussions, and I'll try and do this pretty quickly. So first, looking at Miss Lane's contributions and memberships, I'll just highlight some of the changes. A lot of these are things I really don't really have so much of a choice in paying, or things that we've done historically for some time. A few more meals on meals, a little change there, they are building headquarters, and so all the locales of the region that kind of fled, just chipping a little bit to that capital investment they're making. Genuinely, Legale Society, I think they've requested most years, we've sort of not funded that. Other changes to note, backpacks of love, we have historically not funded them, ever funded them. Also, they put an initial request, the first time, of thirty-one thousand and change, again, having not funded them before, built them fifteen thousand, so it's a good start. And more in line, kind of what we do for some of the other groups, Habitat, Y M C A, and others. And Habitat, they are proposing to fund their full ass, which is an increase over prior years, primarily to fund a little more in the area, and then to partner with them on a housing study for the county. And C R C A, that's related to water, waste water, but we, I think we have historically not funded that request. In a nutshell, the Miss Lane's contributions, memberships.
Sure, and which ones are, oh, memberships?
I would say, yeah, C B W M A, really no good alternative to what we do there, R R P C, that's Plan R V A, or Planning District Commission, those.
Create a criminal justice training academy next door to our sheriff's office, and we can, okay, that trains our deputy.
What about Fago?
Fago, that would be, you know, discretion, I would recommend that. But you don't have to. Monakin.
What is Fago?
Fago, so that is the National Association of Counties, originally supposed to, you know, four hundred and sixty, originally been supposed to not do that, although it was suggested that there's some awards and things that they do, maybe we could go out there and get better recognition for some of the good work in the county. So thought we'll keep that on for one more year, see if maybe we can take advantage of that, and if not, give this a small amount. I think Monakin as well, so on the conservation district, that's one that we either have to do, or there's no real alternative.
We have to do that.
Yeah.
Which one?
Department of Fire Street.
And the Capital Region Workforce Partnership, that is the regional workforce body.
That's a, that's a manager.
If, if we want to participate in, in such a thing. And jumping right into the C I P, well, this is just an overview of what we're proposing to fund in F Y twenty-five, and then what the ten-year totals are for each, and we'll, we'll get the specifics. So looking at public safety, proposing ninety-nine thousand, our nine-one-one dispatch recording device that is near an incident light service, so it incorporates that, ninety-nine thousand. So the top is, on each of these pages, the top is what we're proposing to fund in this budget, and then the bottom will be the additional needs that we see over the next ten years, and then as you go from left to right, how much of that we're proposing to fund by a general fund, trying to grant or issue. Public works, you know, proposing roof replacements on this building, various H P A C systems, some nitrogen for common two in the courthouse. Coming with the term building updates, we spoke about in our last workshop, then updating some of the signage around the village area. And then this is the total of ten-year, these they're projecting out, so I'll, for the sake of time tonight, since if you do want to keep it close to five, I'll concentrate primarily on what we're actually proposing to fund in F Y twenty-five, the rest of this is future year plan. Person, right?
The elevator in the building, you said it was an A D A issue?
Correct.
Is, when, when you, what is that?
Is that part of the admin kind of nation? It's identified as a separate project, but in the same year, I think it's twenty-nine, and that project relates to the renovation of this building, to move administrative services in, we do that, we certainly need that elevator, it needs A D A standards.
So if not being an A D A compliant now, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, we do not have, so the elevator going to the top floor, Houston Palatine Community Services is up there. So currently not having general Palatine County Administration up there, it's, it's not an issue for us. I'm not sure how, how it works for them, so it's. You are A D A compliant based off the age of the building, it was constructed, the elevator was installed. The biggest issue we're facing is that elevator is old, outdated, and so any renovation project, or any upgrade.
And one other question, convenient center of public works, that four and a half million? I remember in past board meetings, that number was a lot higher than that.
Yeah, we, we did propose, when we were in T P A, incorporating Carter Dall. Yeah, we, we had proposed, when we were in T P A, incorporating Carter Dallier Road Project Extension, which would make it, make it larger. Uh, but that would be the road portion, we would propose to be paid C B T A allowance, so that's. So this would be closer to just the actual center construction, so.
And this presupposes that we do it on our nineteen eighty?
Uh, it, it was built around in that area. We, we don't have a plan necessarily to the nineteen or pure by property, but a similar footprint. Then Parks and Rec, so furniture, fixture, equipment improvements, and then community center, as was mentioned, this would be. And to back up, we have the community center feasibility study, so the survey ended up last week, week before on that. So now we'll be working through that, the recommendations of that, assuming it were to recommend the viability of a center, then this would be some funding to start the bond, engineering, possibly, uh, letting care of things that nature to start. And then it's just the, there, there's ten million, you can't help years to move towards actual construction. So those are placeholder numbers, one, we don't have an actual bid or design yet, they're just around placeholder numbers. And also the results of that feasibility study, working through track and for you all to see how that takes shape for now.
Let's see a survey.
So the survey is closed, when, what's the next step in timeline? The survey closed on the eighth of this month, and the councilor plans on having a bottom plate interview in May of this year.
Jim, so if, if, if the location was decided to put it on property, obviously that would take away the hammer issue. I'm just sensitive to what we heard earlier. A lot of other pressures we're facing, terms of schools and other infrastructure issues. Do you have a sense of what the, what the minimum is to keep the project willing relative to, assuming that we're not providing product? By the way, we have now, how much, how much did that number?
It, it will also largely depend on what we want the, the building to be, what's, and that, that was a large part of the study we mentioned, too, was to see what we want to take place inside that building, something for meeting space that's different, something for recreation versus coworking space, cooking class, all, all the various things that could be done in the community center, increase the infrastructure needs inside, increase the size. So really, that'll be a big part of the study, is what we want to take place inside of it, and how many people do we think we'll be using it? So it's hard to say how much we can shrink it down, because that study will be really informative on what it even, what it is. But we felt like looking at some other comparables, I think really, I guess, if the size it might be, this was a good number to at least aim for, knowing that it could be lower or, or higher, but certainly in the round.
Well, how many comments have you got back?
We, uh, we wrapped it up with over three hundred responses.
Results in May.
And going to public utilities, various water treatment plant, equipment, website replacements. Home station, I think we talked about that briefly previously, that all the various private home stations, particularly around the state mill area, are starting to experience pressure issues on the main, so really a solution to that is to build some public stations, have them be that. Would like to do radio meter reading technology for our meters, and then some asset management software.
When, when is that two point six million dollars slated to be spent?
For the, yeah, over the ten years.
Over the ten, it's not signed.
It's in five different fiscal years, but throughout the ten years, it'll be. So we have to start with some planning, design, work, engineering.
Jim, I wanted to labor here, but I have a great time. There are other infrastructure issues that have been discussed over the last several weeks that are not considered in the C I P.
Yeah, particularly related to, we've talked about water supply and ensuring are not just current, which we're, we're good on current, but are long-term, short, immediate, long-term supplies, well, some redundancies. We don't have a single line in, a single point failure to discuss. So we're trying to pull together, there's another options, other localities, our own thing, regional groups, we have allocation at the Department of Corrections. Here Beaumont, so we've got several different options, so we're trying to put some numbers to those. It's been a few years since we looked at them seriously, so a lot of the numbers are very dated, but we're pulling that together now, at least to the high level, and I'd do at least four or five options to secure additional water supply in the future, whether it's micro flights. They, I mean, they'll, they'll continue to be refined as far as their accuracy, but I think at least starting high-level numbers, you know. Yeah, I think that, you know, we had almost a dozen options when we took a step back and really brainstormed secondary water supply. I think that we're narrowing in on a good, one single good long-term option and one single good short-term option. And we're gonna pursue both of those some things.
Have our friends in Chesterfield County show up, would you just to work with us?
They have, uh, we're comparing calendars, they're getting sent us some dates to get together. And we're pretty optimistic about that. Chesterfield plans for water supply over the next hundred years. So capacity, water capacity certainly precedes economic development build out in Chesterfield. Uh, and so we're hopeful there's an opportunity to maybe talk about increase in water capacity in the short term.
We're still looking at alternative source for our.
Right.
I, I, for me, I heard you can get those numbers as tight as you can to bring them to us, because they're all going to figure into what we're dealing with, we're having for in terms of potential borrow special. That plus the schools is a pretty daunting number from what I've seen so far. We just need the numbers.
Yeah. Uh, fire and rescue, two D M S vehicles, a brush truck, ambulance, and a hazmat trailer.
That's one end.
Then sheriff's vehicles, proposing the seven as requested.
The sheriff has a set number of miles, and once it gets beyond that mileage, it's just not true to keep that deal. That's all we're doing, rolling, rolling vehicles off of the inventory, we get rid of it somewhere, and we're just keeping inventory up, that's that proper mileage threshold.
Correct, yeah, this, this is just a regular replacement schedule. When we look at adding deputies or adding staff, then add in vehicles like that, this is their, their cutoff, matching vehicles to staff now.
Just a standard mileage thing.
Correct, this is made during live.
To, to the library, are there any bands that come off of, off of inventory for, for use in, in the county in terms of that mileage threshold that might, might find its way over to our friends in the libraries?
Yes, as, as I was listening to those comments, I may have to go here to follow up on with our staff, see if their vehicles are currently or ones that we know are going to be coming out of service, because maybe they don't meet the needs for certain departments that they could, could be that needs, so we're.
If we do, I'm anxious to see how it looks after it's tricked out.
Administration vehicles, adding one for Parks and Rec, and then planning what theirs is due or passed to for replacement. And anytime we have the, if they are, can be transitioned to a different department, we look at that, and if not, we will typically surplus them on something like go deals. Again, some, some.
We've watched quotes from, we've watched six, we just think, seven.
He follows, uh, the Virginia Share Association does their own procurement policy for all the shares in Virginia. But we are also allowed as a county to also use their contract, and they're typically cheaper if they can find the vehicle that we need.
So these captain C I P, in fact, in hallway, looking to get some more art and pictures and things that depict Palatine County and our history and culture in the hallway, so a little bit of money for mounting systems like you have, you'll see for that. Uh, we have old, old kitchenette in there, use some upgrades, animal shelter, boxing flooring, interior painting of some of the offices, and courthouse.
What is B C T?
B C T, that's the, the video for, kind of like what we have in here or in, in the courtroom, while they're showing up.
It's actually.
Thorn.
It's done.
I was right.
Place.
B C T is full. More.
That's another note, I'm skipping down.
Yeah, yeah, they were asking.
Good to read it. It's all good. Thorn, okay.
Yeah, sorry, the one I'm referencing is the Nomad at the bottom there. John's controls upgrade, concrete patching at the Mitchell Road, Indian Center, some general office furniture repair and placement. Door to finish, courthouse, no room, do the repainting. And then Village Building here, some upgrades in the inventory.
The courtroom doesn't have a A V system now, or is this just an upgrade?
This is not great, something, something more modern that they've requested, or what they use in various warehouses around the area. Or again, showing evidence, things like that.
It'd be a good one.
Ten-year needs. One. Just wanted to highlight administration parking lot. So with the expansion of D M V, we're not sure what kind of traffic we might see. So far, it's certainly been an increase, but not completely overwhelming, so we've just been kind of mindful of that. We have things that we know will be busy, like tax day, we'll ask staff to park some of the county vehicles, maybe behind the building, give them a little extra space. So currently, we're not proposing this C I P to expand the administration parking lot until later. Uh, we have to probably turn our part, ask the plan and incorporate some, some parking we would like to do. So ideally, we'll do it then, but we just kind of, you know, are ready to move quickly if we need to. We find that, that business really picks up the building, it does start to overwhelm it, but right now, we think we'll be okay with what we have, and again, just kind of shovel in some vehicles when we know it's gonna be a heavy traffic day. But I just want to draw your attention, and we do need to follow up in the next year with an immediate solution on that. Then looking over at I T, general P C replacement program, time to replace our firewall, expanding data storage, M D T mobile desktop replacement program for our emergency vehicles, network appliance upgrade, cybersecurity program, broadband, that was the first year of matching funds for the second Firefly grant we proposed. That'll be next month, we should find out whether we've been successful on that or not, so this would need to cover our local match for that. And then some upgrades to the A V here in.
Sure. So, right, what, what are the implications on, on those two replacement programs? What's, what's the downside of the angles of?
Of the PCs and then the mobile.
PC replacement and the M D T.
If we try to, sorry, try to keep on top of it with regular ones, I think implications would be a more aged, aged computer infrastructure. So.
How, how would, how would we, the county feel? Things slow down, things not work.
The M D Ts are in the sheriff's office vehicles and in our fire apparatus, so I think that would not, I mean, except you can't get your data.
It's the space of data, the updates, and I think what I understand from Mr. Wood is that, you know, upgrades from different windows to, you know, as things progress over time, you know, four or five years, you got to keep up with the software, so to speak.
At some point, if you don't agree, they'll just stop supporting it. I get that.
Correct.
Is that the situation we're in, or can we delay these a year to save some money? We could, so we'd have to talk to the I T director and see, we try to be proactive and ahead of it, we replace stuff on a good schedule, so it's not have critical. We're talking about your stage for that, I don't know how ahead we can, how behind we feel, push it out a year.
All right, I know you want me to speak. Yeah, so the, uh, P C replacement, M D T replacement, we replaced about twenty-five percent of the fleet every year. So that's what that funding is for, we're aiming for a four-year replacement lifecycle. Uh, some equipment was spec'd, has the, the correct performance here, the C Q, et cetera, to be repurposed, and we do occasionally do that, but a lot of it is just as Bill say, making sure that we're not into life, that all the software is supported, that we're still under warranty. So anything that we install or have a need to support, has that level of support that everybody's expecting.
School C I P, we reviewed this with them at the joint workshop, but again, just to summarize what it is. And from them, and again, we're looking at their recommendations and what, working together, what we think we can fund in F Y twenty-five. Plan, not be upgrades, improvements to the high school, all the elementary schools, middle school, some diverse wide initiatives, as well as P L C.
I'll go back to I T for a minute. Access control of county facilities, how do we, how do we access our facilities now? Given where you spend a million bucks to do so.
Yeah, currently, this, we're not proposing this at F Y twenty-five, so that would be on your page, showing you the, the total ten-year needs at once. Currently, it's a mix, so there's a number of different ways the building can access, depending on which one, we'll say. Mark, John, you talked to how many total systems we have. Some are for A P I lines, some have pin pads, some have K F O, but there's a number of different systems that aren't the same, that don't talk about others, but we would like to, over the years, bring them all onto fewer. Talk to a little bit.
Yeah, and just a clarification, is that, is that cameras as well? I don't see a separate one of the cameras. So I T inherited access control about two years ago from facilities, it was previously just their kind of wheelhouse. Anytime there was a new building, a renovation or whatever, they would implement an access control system for both your pin pads and your badges, as well as cameras. I think at the moment, we've got something around like four or five discrete access control systems with servers and requirements. I, you know, like right now, I have three different badges on me, so that I can get into every different facility that we have. Since we've taken ownership of that, we've been consolidating, making sure that we have kind of vendor agnostic hardware, but also the badges work everywhere, so if you're deputy or firefighter or county employee or whatever, you know, you know what badge, because you only have one, tap it and it just pushes through.
I, I believe so, but the details.
Is it a convenience issue or is it a safety issue?
Well, a little bit of both. I mean, some of this was brought up after the Virginia Beach shooting. There were some lockdown issues, uh, employees that are no longer with the organization, be able to immediately terminate their access. So that's all enabled by having a single, single system, but even today, with some of the other systems that we, our legacy systems that we have not brought into the main system, uh, there's still like a, a bit of coordination that has to happen outside of I T to, to make sure that users are disabled properly. We don't just have five hundred people who, you used to work here ten years ago, so you have access to this facility.
So just money spent, you will be able to control shutdown, open and close, everything from some central location. So it's a safety, it's more than just convenience, it's, it's a safety.
Right, I mean, in addition to the badge systems, there's also security cameras for all the facilities. Uh, not all of our facilities have security cameras, um, so we're still working through that, deploying that, as well as updating uh, old security cameras. So like our courthouse, of course, that was location one, but those cameras are now a bit dated, uh, any different types of replacements as they age out, so it, it includes both expanding that footprint as well as modernizing the existence.
So that this, this one, if, this, this slide bunches all ten years together in one, but if you look at the C I P book, it's actually funding each year. They propose, there's some leftover funding prior to C I P, you're going to be using. They propose there's some leftover funding prior to CIP that you're using right in current year to be doing that, and we have a little bit each year after that to continue to replace and upgrade. So it's not kind of a $100,000 all at once, and it's ongoing expansion replacement program. And then schools, their request is CIP to 12 million FY25, total 10-year needs, so 78 million inclusive of 12 FY25.
You're proposing 11 million bucks in debt.
It would be 11. Some of that would be general fund, some school operating, but the majority of it, some of the school capital management reserve, the vast majority of it, yes.
That brings a question. And I called while they were. I need for Monday night, tonight. If the school is going to do RTU for X millions of dollars in FY25, then replace the roof the following FY26, from the standpoint of just construction practicality, would we be sort of borrow both of those in one issue of debt or issue debt a little bit each year? That's the question I was asking.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think we've gotten to that level detail as far as how we split those projects, but we absolutely would look at that to make sure that we're borrowing, we're phasing them correctly. We've also, we've talked extensively about if we are to fund any of these, whether it's borrowing or not, can they realistically staff have get to them, you know, put out $12 million in projects in FY25, if they do $12 million, if not, let's phase them out through the year, so that we're not putting out funding, putting stuff funding borrowing.
We go off the clothes and vendors know that the money's there. I, if there's any efficiencies that can be garnered by doing it together, or interest rates, remarkability, bond, I guess they'll come back and advise us on that. The other thing I wanted to say, that after the joint meetings that we had, I, off meeting time, I asked Mr. Ben, what are the things that really got your stomach in the knot? School, silks, and he said, high school roof and air conditioning, Oklahoma's roof and air conditioning, and demolishing A, B, and C. I think of those three other types, those three buildings that land. Those were the three things that were really, really built this top priority. I want to give some advice for you, you all from staff, what that means in terms of the, if we, if we all agree that those are the things that we really need to quickly get taken care of. So that's a lot more than 10 million bucks.
So that's it for the schools CIP, then looking back at budget calendar, so hard to believe that we're about halfway through now at this point. So thank you, really good work, I think. Appreciate the work of our finest department and all of our, all of our dependents, all the law. So we're here, again, kind of getting through on this next workshop. Then on Monday, as part of our regular meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the real estate tax rate. And then hopefully that might adopt the real estate personal property tax rate as would be proposed as much changed in this fiscal year. Then March 28th, we'll have a budget workshop. If we feel ready, then actually next week's regular meeting, you all advise us as to what budget you would like to advertise. And not to exceed the amount, we still thin that, do some things around as we refine it. But if that's the case, then March 28th, we could either purpose that workshop, strategic plan, or some other topic, or cancel it. We don't have, we don't have.
That's true. I, having never done this before, I need to ask, we're past the place to do it. These meetings, workshops, these like at this point, haven't been really conducive to us as having give and take discussions about cutting this, that, this. How would we get to a budget that we can feel comfortable with or advertise? I have things I like to see change to, I did. I want those, how is that going to transpire? Because we're bumping up against dental, the treasurers imposing on getting bills. That time track for us is very narrow unless we extend, we don't send bill bills out. I personally don't want to be constrained.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the state is imposing some of that on the treasurer as well, so then it rolls down, down to us, what some of these timelines are.
But March 25th is not a state.
Right, and after that, I believe is our own internal scheduling, and when we have to get the notices out and do mailings, but also trying to adopt the budget in advance of the schools' contracts. We have to, in the past, we have separated our budget, we adopt the schools portion and then continue discussion on ours, but that's not ideal. We do like to adopt them both together at the same time, when possible. But to the question of, you know, kind of how we get through the budget, I mean, it can either take place in these workshops, or if there's just scenarios, things you all want to see for, you know, I would like to, these things, let's see how we should recommend funding that, or I'm not so sure about that, I would be okay cutting that. And we can have discussions here, if there's things you all just want to send us offline, we're happy to run those scenarios for you and say, if you wanted to add this, we recommend this be of what we cut. So that's kind of your personal preference value, get comfortable with arriving at a budget, but there are things, scenarios, changes, things like that. The last workshop clearly wanted us to explore funding the addition sheriff's deputy and associated vehicles, who are working on that, coming up with, you know, how we would best do that. You would ask the question about what the 67 cents looks like, so we're working on scenario for how we would best propose to get us there, if that was it. So any of those type of things, if you'll have a question or available in the workshop, or whether it's email or stuff by the office, whatever.
I got the 67 cents, no problem. I haven't got any consensus from my colleagues, and I made a general statement about 10% cut in the operation. I don't know where, I would look to you to say, if it was 10%, what would be, what would be cut out with the operation? Not saying this is the case with you or any of your staff, but in past life, when I was in local government, state government, the budget, there's always room to find savings. And looking at the future, what we might have, advice we get from them, or the possibility of that, very slices. That's, to my mind, it's not what fiscal conservatives do, and it's not what my constituents expect me to do. So we just need to find ways to be as miserly as we possibly can, because we're not spending our money. We're not spending our money. What we all can accept.
And I think we, fortunately, you know, we have departments, they're very efficient, conservative, and the board and the public, you know, hold us to that, we're a very fiscally conservative county, so you all help us accountable. But there's certainly always additional efficiencies or things we can find, and we can work with our departments and talk to them. Well, they know their operations best, where to find those efficiencies while minimizing disruption to the services.
And to that point, under Mr. Trump's leadership, his passport, there was a significant decrease in our tax rate. And to the best of my knowledge, just observing, the county's done just fine. We haven't missed any, any service to a citizen and missed a, increased our call rates or our time to respond to, we're doing fine. We managed to survive those tax cuts. Mr. Chairman.
So to Mr. Power's point, when I looked at Brett's proposed budget, the thing that struck me the most was everything that was grayed out. Those are things that were asked for, that we couldn't give them at the current tax rate. And when I listened to Mr. Nunley quote the statistics and the number of calls that have increased and the response times have increased and possible safety to his deputies, I don't see how I could justify lowering the tax rate when we're not getting by on what we have. Again, I have one vote, that's Mark's personal opinion. When I was out talking to some of my constituents, they said, you know what, Mark, I would pay more in taxes for better services and for improvements in the county. And I think that gentleman stated that exact thing at the last meet.
So.
Exactly. So, and listen to what Mr. Davenport said about going out in the future with inflation and expenditures and keeping up. In my mind, personally, Mark Kenny, I cannot justify cutting services, the county's not getting by. There's a lot of things that people wanted, that departments needed, needed another deputy, but they didn't get it. So in my, in my mind, having these discussions is great, Mr. Power's point, I personally would not vote to lower the tax rate this time.
I looked at the presentation we had last, our last budget meeting, and if you look at Brett's proposal, there was a whole lot of gray stuff that was cut, that there might have been a significant cut already, and he got it down to what is needed.
But it's still, it's still higher than last year, not like we're cutting below last year's levels. We're not.
I'm, I'm happy with Brett's proposal, right, I'm happy with the tax rate the way it is. I think we need to. That would go down.
And the future tenure modeling that we're doing now too, you know, if we were to produce it, we would find a way to make it work, certainly, and we'd be okay for FY25, FY26, but again, looking at that long-term forecast, I always have real concerns about what that would look like. We would really have to not just defer, just not do some of those capital projects, especially the schools, there's a lot of things in there, most of the things aren't nice to have, so at some point, it becomes critical, mission critical. So, you know, again, could we squeeze a little more, I don't want to be a little inefficient, you know? Find a way to make it work, we could, short-term, but long-term, we already have, we see that curvature, it's not good enough, yeah, but at some point, we have to correct that trajectory. Now, we're just kind of trying to hold it tight, hopefully we can bring in some more revenues with, you know, good development things and correct that for the long term, but I think for now, we're really trying to hold it, hold it tight and not make that curve steeper earlier. Also looking at other options like broken sources like cigarette tax, people options, the sales tax, that could be a potential reference in the future. So there's a number of things that could alleviate needing to rely so much on the general, general tax base in real estate, but until any of these things are actually realities right now, they're just possibilities in the future. Again, we recommend holding at the current level, again, not for this year, next year, but for the long term.
Still would be interesting to see what you can do with 67 cents.
And we'll, we're working to bring you, bring the board some scenarios to show you, that, you know, if we did go there, you know, how would we recommend do that with minimal disruption?
Just if I could, to Mr. Kenny's point, and I sat here and listened to Sheriff, also, I may have missed it, but I did hear him say about safety to his deputies. And I think that if you look at the fact that his call rates have been going up, testament to his deputy, they're doing a great job, and the county's rolling. But if you, if you dig down below those numbers and say, okay, Sheriff Nunley, what do you, what's the average number of traffic stops you expect a sheriff to do in a month? If there's capacity, even though the rates go up, doesn't mean he needs more people. That, that doesn't compute to me. You have to dig down into the numbers. If everybody that has a little bit more demand on their department says, well, I need, I need, I need more money. There's, there's a limit, this pot is not bottomless. Yes, that's true.
I think we had a discussion about what we want for a tax rate, what we should produce, or we should produce based on 67 cents, and I think we all agree that that's what we want to see to begin with. The majority of us are satisfied with that, with the conversations we had at the last meeting. I know there's, there's some departments that have some needs, some departments that have some wants, but I know I'm talking with Sheriff Nunley, Chief Warner, I think everybody has alternative plans, some of those things that we discussed, which is a good thing. It's a time to leadership as a board, and so we value that, but I think where we need to be is, it's not what this man said, we need to be in good steward of the taxpayers' money, looking at the CIP, even though we do not make sure we're making the right decisions for this county moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, while we have, Sheriff, I mean, Chief Warner here, let me just ask you, on the three, three part-time folks, three full-time folks? Three full-time, but part-time, there's one and a half FTEs.
There's no part-time?
If you didn't, if you didn't get those three, if you didn't, what, what implication would that have on your?
So a good global view of it, currently, we, during the daytime, Monday through Friday, we staff three firefighters at company four, during the day, Monday through Friday, to kind of help us make, to kind of help us make, to make it a little safer at that end of the county, and provide our workforce a little bit better. It's not going to be, it's probably the best thing we can do for the next year, but it's not a long-term fix. It is truly a temporary measure to get us through the next year. My next goal would be, is to look at a staffing grant, a safer grant, next spring, when the opportunity comes, to hire firefighters for the county through the federal government, where we'd only spend, we would, the first year or two, we would not, the county would not have any cost, but the county would have to pick those costs up in year, probably year three, year four, and then into the future. But that would give us time to plan for that and make the plans and apply for grants for that. So we have a plan in place, and if we don't, or if we're not successful in that grant, we're going to ask again in the next cycle for those positions.
So one and a half FTEs is?
If that goes, those folks will end up at company two, Monday through Friday.
That's leveling load or?
Yes, correct. And so it's putting, it's putting two, it's putting two people on a fire engine during the daytime at the eastern end of the county, where between courthouse and Huguenot is where our, our, so lifting, not our call. And that was more as a request of the volunteers, because it's really hard for our volunteers to help staff during the daytime.
Bear with me.
Yes, sir.
How did we survive last year without those?
The request, and, and we have survived, a lot of times, at company two and company four, our responders responded on the fire engine by themselves. That makes me.
It's dangerous.
It makes me uncomfortable, puts them in a position, and then, and then, you know, we have volunteers that time to time will make it there, and daytime is hard for our volunteers. We have, we're a workforce that goes, that goes out of the county. And so, you know, helping during daytime is going to be the first step, it is, you know, it's, it's going to be things, as our volunteer force adds and flows with participation, there'll be, you know, times that we'll have to increase our career workforce.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. One question on the broadband, Brad, $175,000, that's if we get the grant, we would match that for Firefly. But if we didn't get the grant, we don't spend that money, and we can look at other vendors besides Firefly.
Yeah, if we didn't get that, we could either kind of view it as what we'd already planned to spend $175,000 on broadband, so let's find a different way to partner or do something different, still doing broadband, or we could just say, we could get that grant, that money goes back to something else, not even necessarily related, you know, you do whatever you want to cap with that. But yeah, we could also put out RFP or RP or something to generate interest and say, we've got this one.
Matching to get. So we spend $175,000 to generate more in a match.
Correct, but if, if the grant's not awarded, then there's no match needed to that money, then it's free to be used for something else. Yeah, yeah, we could have to spend it.
Are we happy with Firefly now? I mean, I know you've met with it several times. I'm not. You're not.
I can use this.
I'm not happy with it, so. Not all areas have been, and they don't.
Are we happy with Firefly right now? I mean, I know you've met with him several times.
I'm not happy.
You're not.
All the news isn't.
I'm not happy with it, so. My whole area is, and they don't. I brought it up that it was, I'm sorry. Thought we were open comment here. Um, I brought it up that my particular house said two thousand twenty-seven. He says, oh no, that can't be right. I, I wish I had taken a snapshot, because it did say that. Now, it was brought down within three months and, and it put twenty twenty-five. Well, now it doesn't even say that for my particular area. Now, Fred, it's the lower end of the spectrum as far as the county's concerned. Uh, there's not a lot of big money in that area. Uh, there's not as much money for that company to earn in that area. There's a lot of driveways. The houses are very, very far apart. So, you know, I understand all of the logistics of it, but you know, you can't do it. Say you can't do it. Don't keep letting me tell my constituents, which is what I actually campaigned on. You know, I'm going to do this. I'm going to do whatever I can do to get the internet out here. If they can't do it, I would just like for them to say, hey, we're just not going to be able to service that area. So that I could at least say, hey, look, guys, Firefly is not going to make it here, but we are looking at alternatives to help them.
Jim, I, I'm sensitive to it. This one was sensitive. But I don't care who we get. The economics of doing things where the houses are two miles apart and driveways, it's not going to be the same thing. And so Firefly is just, from what I gather, doing its love best and doing very difficult work.
I see it every day.
And every day. Is our issue that they're not meeting the deadlines that they keep saying or they keep pushing them out? Or are they actually rendering poor service to those people that have one? I, I don't, I hear complaints about the service itself.
I have great services.
Great change. So what I'm hearing from staff is that they set timelines and they don't meet them. The other quick, the other problem I had is I had a meeting with them and asked for information and they never provided. And then I asked for it again, and they sent me a tutorial of their website. So that is not acceptable. Um, so, you know, if, if we're doing business with somebody as a county, just like if you went to the store and we're doing business with somebody and they didn't give you the information, well, guess what? You've got some grounds. So, um, yeah, I, I'm going to give them another shot. I'm going to, I don't want gambling from the Electric Cooperative there. I just want to meet with the gentleman in charge of Firefly and, and then we something, invite you again and sit down and see if we can get what we have.
Good.
Okay, so on Firefly's behalf, I like to be on both sides. The weather has been really bad. You can't do underground cabling when the ground is wet. It has been a substantially wet year. So that has definitely caused construction delays. No doubt, no doubt. The areas that they are servicing, everybody loves it. They truly do. Everybody that I've heard that has it, they love it. I personally couldn't wait. So, um, I got Scott, Scott. And it's, it's wonderful. I originally had um USNAP. Those people should go out of business, because they are liars, period. Um, one other thing that I'd like to say, um, has nothing to do with Firefly. On our budget, I feel like, because of my cookie background, I feel like there are still some areas that can be cut back. The community center, I actually put a survey on my own Facebook page. No one wants community center. I then gave them a link to the actual parks and rec, so that they could voice their own opinions. District five is not wanting community center. And I know that if it comes up for a vote, I will not vote for community center. Not at this time. Question.
Mr. Jim, I, Mr. Morris said, I agree with you, not, not to do away with it. I, I, it's not something that I feel comfortable. Like, it's other than major, you have, um, like borrowing, so we borrowing money for what? So I agree with you.
Great idea. It really is. It would be great for the county, but we have a lot of very, very important things that we've got to provide.
What I hear, if I could, you're open, Brett, us sending, distributing to everyone, we say something to you about areas on the budget where we, we would ask you to consider making some adjustments. Just send it to you in the next week?
Yes, yeah, I'll say definitely over the next week with the, uh, the ideals, so that we can look and see how to do that and bring it back to you. Yeah, we'll share the whole board, so everybody gets the same information.
I'm smiling, because I was just thinking, imagine we do that. You need to take a week off, because you're going to be so tired.
Well, I think it sounds like in terms of publishing the tax rate. I, I, I clearly, I thought it so, um, we were comfortable, feeling comfortable with others, like, you know, they would shoot out. I just feel like we could take a look at a few members.
As, as you all should. That's why we can just process it.
One thing that is not on any of these lists that I would, I would like to get out of this is it's in the budget. And that's, that's, you got the EDA. Looking at funding them at fairly significant fire rates that we have historically. Um, I've met with EDA several times. Just very impressed with how the county is understanding. And if we're going to make a statement to the world, out and canvas, it's very committed, very managed, managed and guided growth, we are now business friendly, economic, debt development friendly. Being more involved with them as a county, using them and their authority that they can do to borrow money and do things that the county can do, it's ready. Funding them a little bit more aggressively to create these stations.
Mr. Jim?
Just one more question. So on the convenience center, since we have not determined exactly how we want to pursue that going forward, because I personally think we can do it without paying for it. Is there a way to just take that out of the budget?
I mean, that's ultimately, that's your decision. You can, especially.
Or well, now, like, especially year twenty-seven?
Absolutely.
Next century?
We will do something eventually, so I, I would think we need to do a really close study, I mean, as far as how much, what year, what?
Because I think, you know, we've come to some consensus about how we want to move forward with it. But we don't know cost-wise, what that will be, what, what, what that will be determined. So, you know, my colleagues concur, and we talk about, I would just rather push it even a year.
To, it's currently in twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, yeah, we're not far from, from this.
Twenty, twenty-nine.
We're going to need it in the future. You know we are.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, with, with vacancy and public works director as well, and all the other priorities and projects going on, we're going to pause on that. And we'll restart it and enter this once we have a public works director. Going, scheduling some interviews on that now, but we'll, once we get them on board, we'll start to bring that project back.
As we start to look at order in, in schools in terms of needs versus wants. I use the convenience center every single week. I can, I can stand and wait in line for the next, the next fifteen or twenty minutes upset, rather than spend four or five minutes.
On that point of that convenience center, it could be rerouted. It, it's.
The one we had that?
Yes. It is a terrible horseshoe. I don't know who decided to do that that way, but it could be redone in a better way.
Well, we will be.
It truly could.
Yeah, and we're going to look at, uh, what, whether it's just making that one more efficient, whether it's building that one and making that more efficient. We're going to be looking at that facility, trying to get what we can out of it.
I think we'll absolutely need the other one, without a doubt, but the one that we have is, is not functional.
Yeah, but we're, we're going to be looking at that as well, to how do we, how do we efficient, bring more efficiency to that.
We, we, we went to the waste management advisor, but they're talking about satellites. Not all convenience centers, but points throughout the county that were set up, satellites that we need people to use. And the company that we contracted would pick that up from those satellites. There's more operational issues there. You've got to keep up with each satellite site, I get that. But the company we contracted, put, put the cams there. They'll pick them up. Yes?
Okay. Yes, sir.
So as, as a stopgap, if we're going to push it out, big convenience center out that far, we might want to look at the concept of satellite. Something good for the new director to do, Robert's at East Door, goes, is it?
Yeah, you can put a mic on this one. Anything to cover up, sort of like the mulled grass.
All right, anyone else? That brings us to our second public comment period. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for, uh, groups. Anyone?
Good thing. Doug is going to. Project Monstar, we signed you a resident of the project company, living at four four eight one Cosby Road.
I'm going to talk about two main points, and they are both related to what Davenport presented earlier this afternoon, and a few other things. Also, I will continue on my theme from the last two weeks of taking a business-like approach to county business, school business. I believe capital, like everything else, is a scarce resource. You cannot just sprinkle it all over the place. It's a scarce resource. So, given that, what is the process that we use for considering alternatives, such as deferring or doing nothing? Doing nothing is always an alternative. There may be some risks involved and so on. So we could understand the pros and cons of all the different alternatives, understand the risks, but deferring or doing nothing is always an alternative. I'm sorry that Davenport, Davenport people left, but I was going to ask them, do we consider lease versus buy as an alternative? And what are the implications on cash flow, bond ratings, or any other components that we might have? Because if we are limited by the amount of capital that we can spend because of certain restrictions, would leasing be an alternative? This is a question I asked last year, and I'll ask it again. What is the project post-completion audit process and the metrics for measuring the effectiveness of our capital spending? And the whole capital spending process, it's made up of a number of sub-processes, starting off with project selection, design, cost estimating, bid preparation, and so on and so forth, all the way through user training, project closeout, and so on. Do we have a process today that helps us audit and to measure how effectively we spent that money? If that money was spent on time, on budget, with quality deliverables that we have in mind? We publish those results. What are the learnings that we get from that? Things that we want to continue doing and things that we want to improve? So, second point. A few weeks ago, Mr. Powers suggested an off-site meeting, a retreat for the board of supervisors and the school board. If such a retreat, if such a meeting was held, I would have to suggest an agenda item for that meeting. The two boards get together and discuss and establish a task force to explore the opportunities and feasibility of simplifying and eliminating duplication of work between the schools and the county, such as facility management, procurement, finance, HR, IT, legal, and any other support areas. Is there a compelling need for something like that? Why do this? Yes, in my mind, it's quite simple. As a small rural county, it is not efficient or cost-effective to have any duplication. And it goes back to some of the things that the folks from Davenport were talking about, about having a revenue line going up faster than your expenditure line. What is the likely benefit of having such a task force? And getting them to give us some data? I don't know today, but given the size of the proposed fiscal twenty-five budgets for both the schools and the county, I suspect the potential benefit could be in the millions, rather than just in the thousands. That's just my intuition. And as someone said, I think maybe Jamie last week, every penny of tax rate is five hundred seventy thousand. If we're talking about millions, in my mind, that's three to five cents on the tax rate or better. What are the likely obstacles? I can think of at least three right now. Maybe there's some code of Virginia which restricts combining support, the support services for the schools and county. Maybe there's some restriction on having them separate, I don't know. I think second obstacle I see is a desire by each board to maintain its independence, empire, and authority. I can maybe see that on the school side. Second, third obstacle I see is inertia or reluctance to change. It's just human nature. If we were to create such a task force, what study timeframe should we get? I would suggest, or recommend maybe three to four months from the date of inception for that task force to come back with recommendations of the size of the opportunity and the feasibility of implementing them. It's not likely we would implement them over one year, but maybe over several years, because there's going to be a lot of complexity. But at least let's get the study done, understand what's the potential size of that opportunity. And if we can implement some of them, a hundred percent of them, that'd be wonderful.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
What would you like to do this?
I would come to this final period, see what else. County administrator comments?
Uh, any comments?
Board comments?
Brett or Charlotte, I would really appreciate it if, if we, I could better understand what we're paying Davenport for their price, what's the contract in terms of percentage that they're making? I know that they've talked about watching over our investments and our value. Uh, and that our savings might, might be recharged from that. Every time they refinance or every time we issue something, they're making mine. And I made a lot of them. And we've had them involved with us for nineteen years without any competitive pressure. Wondering, not Cassidy and Purges, they have no reason to doubt that they're above board. But how do we know we can't get a better, better, better situation if they've been doing, they've been dealing with twenty years? I know we're probably comfortable with it, we used to. And I think if, if they've been doing business with us nineteen years, they've made twenty-one. I think it's, it would be a long, maybe thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Uh, we can share, uh, that we have a contract also, should be able to find past payments over the years, what we have paid. Uh, and, uh, with, with prior board, um, had similar discussions. So we had said, can I get through the, the past year? I think we did a one-off, maybe one-year contract. But he said we could do, in our, our, put it out there, just see what's out there. So that was the special.
I mean, so, you know, there are other, other large, large houses that do this. It's kind of, it's effective finance. Something else, keep your thoughts. On rates.
Well, uh, we'll get the board some information on that.
Thank you.
Brett, let's thank you again, you were your staff, all you do is listen, help, help, see what you. We adjourned.